Welcome to the Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023 Business Meeting of the Board of Education. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible and liberty in the just.
Okay, for anybody who's not familiar with emergency accidents, we have them behind you and behind us. Hopefully, we don't need them. I need a motion for the Approval Order of Agenda, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, we will go to the Plush Report.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held April 19th, 2023.
I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Other comments? Schoolroom speakers will be recognized who wish to address the board on agenda items only. I think we're all here for some stuff, so. All right, we're gonna start with our Students of the Month, and I'll start with Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Ms. Springer. I'd like to ask Mrs. Paul Mary and Ms. Ferguson, please come on and join me. All right. First, we are backtracking a little bit, all the way to the month of February, and we're very proud of our Student of the Month, Sidney Blum. Sidney, come on. Sidney is a bright, dependable, and courteous girl. She continually demonstrates perseverance and amazing responsibility throughout fourth grade. We can always count on her to participate no matter what the activity, and she is always ready to learn. Sidney is extremely helpful, and she's incredibly polite. Whenever we ask Sidney for help, she always enthusiastically replies, "Sure, I would love to." She's perceptive about other people and their feelings. Sidney is always showing kindness inside and outside of her classroom, and is a great friend to classmates. Sidney loves to write poetry, creative adventure stories. Even though in the classroom we find her poetry inspiring, her true passion is fictional writing. Sidney truly has a gift and a passion for expressing herself in writing. We realized her gift early this year when the class was asked to write a tribute to the heroes of September 11th. Sidney wrote an inspirational essay on what it meant to be a hero. As a result, Sidney presented her essay at the September 11th ceremony at Hampton Bay's Elementary School. Sidney loves to go to art, so she expresses her feelings on paper. She also enjoys physical education because she finds it fun and energetic. Outside of school, Sidney enjoys playing with her dog, Mako, Nova, and Ranger. Sidney studies jujitsu, easy, I'm an old man, and is about to get her, and is about to be a great. Sidney stated that she's doing this for protection, not to hurt people. She enjoys playing with her little sister Taylor because she's always up for an adventure. Sidney also enjoys playing football with her older brother Ryder after they finish their homework. Sidney has not decided what she wants to be when she grows up. However, she is considering many options such as being a veterinarian because she loves animals, or a police officer in the K-9 unit to help people in the community. Sidney is a pleasure to have in class and adds so much enthusiasm to whatever activity we are doing. She's a role model inside and outside of school. We're truly honored and proud to have Sidney in our fourth-grade class this year. Thank you, Sidney, for being such a wonderful girl. Cannot wait to see all the great things you will accomplish in the future. We'd like to close with a quote from a fellow classmate of Sidney's. "I don't know what Sidney is going to do in the future, but I know it's going to be great," by Ren Fulham. We're proud to have nominated Sidney Blum for March Student of the Month. There's no one who deserves it more. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Paul Mary and I are proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Kevin Haradus-Chez. Kevin, come on up. There are so many reasons Kevin has been selected as Student of the Month for April. Kevin is a smart and respectful student. He works hard in all that he does. Kevin has great perseverance and never gives up, always striving to do his very best. We can always count on Kevin to participate in all classroom activities. He is always eager to learn. He loves to ask questions. He's a critical thinker, and adds great insight into classroom discussions. Kevin is friendly and outgoing and always inclusive of others. His kindness contagious, and he brings a smile to all those around him. Kevin is always positive and willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done. Kevin is an unbelievable artist. His drawings will amaze you. He's always willing to lend a helping hand, Ms. Paul Mary, whenever his artistic abilities are needed. And Mrs. Paul Mary is actually really good herself. Most of all, Kevin has an amazing sense of humor. His comedic timing is impeccable. Kevin makes us laugh each and every day, and he always knows when and where to use his humor. He definitely brings something special to the classroom. Kevin's favorite subject is math. He loves Ms. Paul Mary's math group, especially the coin dice game. He loves to roll that dice and add the values up his head. Kevin says there's so much you can do when you, when you know math. Kevin's favorite memory from second grade so far is doing projects, especially the math projects. Recently, he made an egg basket using triple-digit subtractions, his favorite. And he says he really enjoys his class because Ms. Paul Mary makes learning fun, and she's very silly. Outside of school, Kevin enjoys doing homework and playing soccer. He's great at kicking the ball and scoring lots of goals. Kevin is a pleasure to have in class. We're truly honored and proud to have him in Hampton Bay's Elementary School. We cannot wait to see all the great things that are ahead of him. Congratulations, Kevin.
Okay, I see Mr. Shutt is ready to go. Good evening. Big night for the middle school. We have three Students of the Month we're recognizing this evening. First, I'd like to introduce Hampton Bay's Middle Schools' Student of the Month for February, fifth grader Manuela Ribero. Manuela was recommended by her teachers, Ms. Pendleberry and Ms. Sokel, who I see in the audience here. Thank you for being here. Manuela's teachers share the following with me. To put it simply, Manuela is extraordinary. She speaks two languages, English and Portuguese. She has earned academic presidential honors in the classroom, and plays sports, participates in after-school clubs and activities. And outside of school, Manuela is involved in theater, West Hampton Beach Performing Arts Center. Manuela is known by her classmates as someone who is kind, funny, empathetic, and she has a sharp wit. Her friends know she can be silly and playful, but in class, she is quiet, she is focused, and she is goal-oriented. This recognition has been a long time coming for Manuela, as she exemplifies for others the true meaning of an everyday Student of the Month and a remarkable human being. Congratulations, Manuela, and we look forward to many more years of accomplishments at Hampton Bay's Middle School and beyond. We are all proud of you, Manuela. Congratulations. All right, up next, we have Mariana Angel Escudero for March from the middle school. Come on down. So, Mariana is one of our seventh-grade students. She has a variety of interests at school. She loves learning. Her favorite subject in school is science with her teachers, Mrs. Heenan and Mrs. Studi, where she's currently learning how to build 3D models of, sorry, 3D models of molecules, and that is one of her favorite things that she's doing right now in school. Mariana's other interests include work with the garden club with Ms. Taylor, where she's currently working to get the garden club up and, uh, the garden, rather, up and running, and she loves spending time in the garden with her friends. One of Mariana's other passions is drawing. She loves drawing sketches of pictures, pictures of nature, as well as the world around her. One of her favorite things to draw is trees. When Mariana graduates high school, she plans to go on to college and would one day like to be a pediatrician. She is passionate about helping children, and we wish her all the best in that endeavor. In her free time, Mariana is not only doing her schoolwork and working in the garden or drawing, she enjoys watching movies. One of her favorite genres is horror movies, and her favorite movie is Scream. In her advice for new middle school students, Mariana suggests always try new things and do your best, whether it's learning something new or trying something new. We look forward to watching Mariana grow next year at HBMS and go on to achieve her goals. She surely has a bright future. Congratulations, Mariana. And last but not least, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce Hampton Bay's Middle Schools' Student of the Month for April, sixth grader Mariana Masalve. Congratulations. Mariana is a well-rounded student who is making the most of opportunities she has at HBMS. In the classroom, she appreciates all she learns from her science teacher, Mrs. Dubrowski. Her favorite topic to learn about so far has been ecosystems and minerals. In addition, Mariana's other favorite classes are Home and Careers, Computer Science, and Health. When she is not engaged in the classroom, Mariana is a fierce competitor in volleyball and badminton. She is proud of her ability to set the ball for her teammates and mostly, uh, most enjoys the teamwork aspect of these sports. Outside of school, she has learned to roller skate and does this along with her mother. She's an avid reader of graphic novels, and more specifically, comics and the fantasy genre. While only a sixth grader, she admits she has college aspirations but doesn't have the specifics for us yet. What Mariana does know is that she enjoys art, pencil drawing, and pencil drawing specifically. Her middle school motto, the advice she'd offer to new students at HBMS, is this: Study hard, work hard, and pay attention. We are proud of Mariana's accomplishments at HBMS so far, and we look forward to many great times ahead in your future. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Shutt. All right, we will move on to Mr. Morgan from.
Thanks. Tonight, I'll be joined by Ms. Crusay. Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to introduce the April Student of the Month for Hampton Bay's High School, Julia Skorakis. Julia has the unique distinction of being the only freshman to be selected as Student of the Month this year, but also the only underclassman as well. Julia described the transition from middle school into high school as an easy one. She admits she was a little nervous. However, there have been a lot of people in the building that have helped her and that she can count on each day, like Mrs. Loesch, Mrs. Crusay, and all of her teachers. Julia was recommended by Mr. Gill and the Phys Ed Department. Julia loves being active, playing sports, especially new ones, like the ball. That's right, Julia is part of the pickleball revolution that is currently sweeping the nation. Mr. T., watch out, Julia's coming for you. I can say that all of my interactions with Julia leave me with a smile on my face. She is funny, kind, and a person with great spirit. Her favorite subjects include math and science, and she would eventually like to pursue a career in the medical field. Anyone that knows Julia knows that she is a huge Gray's Anatomy fan. She has all the merch, including the lunch bag. After a rather old field day event last week on turf field, I saw Julia was wrapped up in her Gray's Anatomy blanket. Even though Julia is a great student, she told me that she cannot wait until the school year is completed. Each summer, Julia attends camp at the Fresh Air Home in Southampton. She participates in activities such as swimming, fencing, and an event that I would like to try, giant soccer. Julia has been attending camps since she was six years old and loves returning to see her friends that she has known for years. A softball fundraiser was recently held for Julia, and instead of using contributions for her own medical costs, Julia chose to have the funds donate to the Fresh Air Home. Quite a selfless act. Julia has faced many challenges this year. After an extended absence from school, Julia demonstrated her resilience and determination by keeping up with her studies and having an almost seamless transition back to the classroom. Julia's teachers have only great things to say about her. Ms. Stevens said Julia is an extremely hard-working student. She is diligent, organized, and has a great sense of humor. Ms. Boyle said Julia is a wonderful student who is caring and hardworking. She is very motivated and stays on top of all of her schoolwork. At the beginning of the year, Ms. Boyle asked her students to pick a motto to follow, and Julia chose "Don't Give Up," which I think quite exemplifies Julia. She is one tough cookie. Once again, the April Student of the Month, Julia Skorakis.
Okay, folks, congratulations all again to the great students. We're gonna take a quick five-minute break if anybody wants to take some pictures, and then we will be back with the really exciting stuff. Okay, look at all these lucky youngsters who get to stay with us. We're gonna go back to Mr. Clemens now, all right? That's why everybody stayed.
Yeah, I can clear them. Good evening, everybody. Today is, today's business portion is a traditional business agenda, but also our budget hearing and UPK lottery. So, we'll start to see moms and, moms and dads coming in for, for the lottery. Mr. Meyer will take us through that. Just wanna start quickly by recognizing our science research students. Last week, April 27th, we had our 10th Annual Science Research Symposium. So, it's shocking that it's been 10 years already of generations of kids coming through this program, participating in real clinical and field-related research and study on a topic that's important to them. You can see that on the right, and I would challenge you to pronounce every single one of those words, and even challenge you more to spell them correctly. These kids are passionate about their work, and it was, it's always a great night to celebrate them with the community. I get tremendous positive feedback from elected officials and from community members who, who attend this and mark it on their calendar every year. So, congratulations to our Science Search Symposium, and especially Mrs. Lavezoli, who is in her first year facilitating that program. She inherited that from Dr. Forsberg. On May 1st, we celebrated Commitment Day, College Commitment Day, for our graduating class of 2023. You can see on your slides there, our kids are headed all across the United States, including service in the military. I mentioned that on Thursday, May- And I mentioned that on Thursday, May 25th, Southampton, West Hampton, and Hampton Bay will again join forces together to recognize our academy and enlisted graduating seniors. We host that program at Agawam Park. Each of us takes a piece of it, but Southampton has beautiful Agawam Park there, right on the pond, to have that ceremony with the American Legions, the VFWs. They leave with scholarships and some really special, an American flag, a pocket constitution, which is important because they swear to defend that constitution as early as July 1st. And a gold, and a Blue Star flag for our enlisted family members. So that flag flies proudly in your home, in Mom and Dad's home, to let the community know that they have a loved one serving, they have a child serving in the military, and that allows for greater community support. So take a look at those colleges. It's remarkable, we have students heading right into the workforce to be successful in their passion, some starting locally at college, and some going far, far away, right away at university. So we continue to be committed to the idea that the pathway is the right pathway if students can figure out with, by taking advantage of what Hampton Bay has to offer, what they're good at, what they like, and what that means. That makes school very easy for kids. So we move to the budget hearing. I'm not going to say too much more about the budget, because we have gone through this over the last several board meetings. One, we had a late, late April meeting and an early May meeting. So there's really been only one change. The governor and the state legislature have arrived at a budget deal, and that voting takes place over a couple of days. It's done now, it started the other day. And what that did was bring a little bit more stage, just a little bit, but since the budget is passed already, by, we had to pass it at that, at that April date by statute, what that does is takes the tax levy increase from a 0.9% increase to a 0.75% increase. So that is, that's a good thing. Enrollment continues to, we continue to just keep our on enrollment as, as we do both single-year and multi-year budget planning. The budget is a 7% spending increase in line with rising costs and some programmatic commitments that we're making. Some of the COVID dollars, the COVID grants will start to expire. The first round of grants will expire September 30th of 2023. So we have a conservative and responsible plan for having really focused on one-time expenses in those COVID grants, so that sustainability isn't a worry. But there were a number of teaching positions that have helped with learning recovery, remediation, and enrichment coming out of COVID. And because the increase in state aid from Albany and fully funding the foundation aid, fully funding the foundation formula, we're able to move those positions that would have expired in September into the general fund for support at, in all three buildings. That's academic support and also social, emotional support through additional social work in all three buildings. The, I will note that we look at long-term financial planning, but also historically, we've come in terms of our budget planning and, and budget execution. So I'll note that in 2010, 88 cents on the dollar spent in the school district was borne by the local property taxpayer. Each year, we advocate at the state level. I go to Albany every six or eight weeks to engage with state education officials and elected officials. New York State School Board's work, the work that you've done in Nassau Suffolk School Boards, and the relationships we've built with our elected officials have been part of the puzzle that has encouraged the legislation that fully funded foundation aid. So 88 cents on the dollar in 2010, coming from the local property taxpayer. Today, that is 75 cents on the dollar. So the local share of what it costs to educate a Hampton Bay's payment, with all the programs that we believe in, first-class programs that give kids a competitive and high-quality education, more money comes from Albany to get that funded. And that's a good thing, as we understand that in order to provide for a first-class education, we have to have first-class staff and programs, but also being responsible and respectful to the local property taxpayer, who comparatively speaking, has a higher tax burden in their tax rate than our neighbors on the South Fork and in Southampton Town. Tuesdays, the tax levy increase this year is a 0.75 increase. As I mentioned, annual spending increase is a 7.35% increase. You can see that on, on the right chart there. The budget will be voted on on Tuesday, May 16th, always the third Tuesday in May, from 7:00 AM to dining in the middle school gym. Our district clerk, Mrs. Lawson, is already processing absentee ballot requests, and so that process has already begun. Those ballots aren't opened until the end of the day on Tuesday, May 16th. There'll be two questions to be asked. Number one, as a community member, registered voter, do you authorize the school budget for 2023-24? Second question has been a question that has shown up on every proposal in the last 15 or 16 years, that's to authorize the use of up to $300,000 of undesignated unreserved fund balance from this year. If there's any money left over when the books are closed, up to $300,000 for minor repair and renovation. We learned after the 2000, we executed after the 2012 bond referendum, that the regular and, and attentive attention to maintenance and repair and upkeep on the facility prevents bigger costs, bigger projects down the road. It's the same philosophy you would do at your house. You don't wait until there's a hole in the roof and it's raining to fix the roof. You care for things, and then they last longer, and then they perform better for the purposes that we need in school. You'll vote, community members will vote for one board of education seat, which is up this year. This is Mrs. Capuano's seat. She's running unopposed this year and has submitted her name for the community support to continue its board service. We thank you for that service, Mrs. Capuano. And because of that, the same yearbook picture will be used next year in the high school yearbook. So I hope you all looked good. At this point, I'll take any questions from the board, and I'll just say HBschools.us calendar, website, has our active calendar on it. We are in busy, busy season at this point. End-of-year field trips, celebrations, concerts, performances, and so before we know it, we'll be to commencement week, where we're over the bridge. We are doing the commencement walk through all three buildings to see old teachers and let the students celebrate us of 2023. Takes right through prom, senior awards, commencement. Today's May 3rd, tomorrow's June 4th. That's how fast this happens. Questions or comments from the board?
Do we have a date for over the bridge?
Monday, June 20th, Tuesday, June 20th, thank you, is over the bridge. Wednesday, June 21st, grade eight moving up. Thursday, June 22nd, senior prom at the Canoe Place Inn. And Friday is senior awards, Saturday's commencement. Drink your coffee that week. Okay, thank you, Mr., I think we have Larry, and then we'll do the budget here.
Evening, Mr. Springer and board members. A couple things to update you on today. First of all, we're perfect, 100% perfect inspection rate on our school van. We've been inspected twice by DOT, once in November, again now in April. The van passed all inspections with zero defects. John asked me if this could be the percentage of his raise for next year, and I all explained, We are in the midst, and will soon have a transportation internal audit report. We're waiting, it's the first time we've ever done this. I expect this report will note some areas for improvement. It would be tough to, to be doing this for the first time, and it comes up perfect. This is not, I don't expect that to happen. There will likely be areas where we will be guided to improve reporting or improve systems, the testing of systems, things like that. The purpose of internal audit is really to discover, find where you could be better and where you could put those best practices into place. And, and I think that this report will not be one of the ones where I say to you, hey, everything's perfect. It'll be one of those ones where I say to you, okay, we need to do a little bit better here, here, and here. So that, that will be coming in the next couple of weeks. Driver's education and the van I just spoke about. Driver's Ed used to be that you would have part of the class in the classroom, and we have a classroom teacher who teaches that, and then you would have part of the class in the car, the in-car driving part. When COVID happened, in-car driving went away, and in-car driving was done with your parent in your car, and your parent signed off, you got the requisite number of hours, and so on. That now is going away. The state said, oh, we don't like that, let's go back to the old way of doing it. We want an in-car instructor, we want someone making sure you're comfortable behind the wheel. When COVID occurred, all the companies that had the cars and had staff and were doing that, laid off people, got rid of cars, and got out of business, some of them, anyway. So you can't find many people who will do in-car driving right now. There's, there's actually a scramble for the few out there who will do it. So we'd like to approach this three ways, and each way is kind of going to overlap the other to make sure we have coverage no matter what. The first is, we got very lucky. Home Ten Driving School, located right here in Hampton Bays, had wanted to be a driving instructor for us, pre-COVID, but we already had a contract, so we couldn't change that. The owner is, we've established a rate, we've got a contract prepared, we just have to get it approved first by state ed, and then he's ready to sign it, and it seems like he'll be able to work with us. He is a sole proprietor, one person, one car. So he's not going to be able to meet our needs if we have 48 students who need driver's ed. Plan number two, there are at least three teachers who, in the district, who have expressed interest in teaching in-car driver's ed. Only problem there is only one of them actually has the certification to do so at this time. The other two would have to go get it. It'll take them probably six months, nine months to even get the certification, so they would not be available probably until January or so. And we have to come up with a driver's ed car. Well, the little van that got 100% inspection rate can also be a driver's ed car. We have to modify it slightly, have to put a brake pedal in the passenger side, which will eliminate that seat then as a seat for a student when we use it for transportation, but it would work fine as a driver's ed car. It's actually got a really good windows, you can see everything in that car. So that'll work good for that. Then the third option is, All Suffolk, which was our old auto school, said to me that they'd be interested in working with us, maybe starting in the fall, if they can hire enough employees and get cars. So we're not going to count on that one, because there's a lot of ifs and maybes there, but that's our third option. The plan is to kind of overlap each option, so that if one slips or can't fulfill everything, the others can pick up. What I did see, no matter where I went, no matter how I tried to crunch the numbers, driver's ed likely to be a much more expensive proposition than it was before COVID. It was around $475 then, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of 700 now, because it's just, the costs have all gone up, everything, the insurance, the gas, the cars, and you can't find the people to do it. It's going to be an expensive piece. Last but not least, we are looking into community eligibility provision, or what they call CEP, for breakfast and lunch. A CEP district designation allows a school, allows schools to have higher-needs children to serve free lunch and breakfast to all. We had looked into this, we ran the numbers a couple of years ago, we run them frequently, actually, and under the current rules, the district would have to supplement about $100,000 from the general fund in order to be CEP and give free breakfast and lunch for all. That's why we didn't do it, because we just knew that that's not going to fly. So we had to hold back on that. However, New York State just passed a law that will change the economics of how CEP works, that there'll be more money for a CEP district per meal than there was under the old rules. Doing the analysis we, we were working with today and looking at in the last couple of days, it looks like it's just about there at breakeven. So we're going to keep playing with that. Hopefully, there'll be more information about how it's going to work coming from the state, but we think that there's, there's a chance that we could switch to CEP and come September be able to offer free breakfast and lunch. We're going to keep our fingers crossed on it, and there'll be more to come on this in the future.
For everyone?
For everyone, yes. It would be free, free breakfast and lunch for, for all students. The way the economics would work out, it would, it would cover us, we'd be right there at breakeven. If we picked up 10%, 20% students, who would probably put us over the top, we'd make a small profit on the, on the process. That's where we want to be, yes.
Would it change the quality of the food that we are able to receive?
We would, we would absolutely try not to change the quality, and in fact, if we, if we could get the numbers higher, if we could get more kids to participate, because it's free, we might even be able to improve the quality and, and give more to the kids than we are right now.
That would be great.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Okay, we will move to the budget hearing. I need motion to open that hearing.
Motion.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, are there any comments or concerns? I think we've been over this a couple times now, right? All right, well, what's that?
0.75, it's great.
Going down, not up. Okay, then I need a motion to close the hearing. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move to, we'll do consent agenda from 4A to 4D. Unless there's any questions, I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel, special education, 5A on its own, any mo, I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel, we would do consent agenda, if there's any questions, 6A, 6E, I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Board of Ed, we're going to break up a little bit, we're going to do a consent agenda from 7A to 7B first. Need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and then we will go to Mr. T. and Mr. Meyer for lottery.
Thanks, Mr. Springer. On behalf of the elementary school, we just want to say thank you to the Board of Education for all their support for our pre-K programs over the years. It's always an exciting night to get to a chance to welcome our newest students coming to Hampton Bay School District, and that's what we'll be doing tonight. So we're just simply calling our students in the number of order, and that's the order we'll be offering services. So Mr. T., we're going to start the lotto, and we have 37 students signed up tonight. Every student will be offered services, so that's exciting.
So I'm going to spin the magic wheel, we're going to pull 10, I'll lock my names out, and we'll label them 1 through 10, and then we will read them aloud, get the order for the 2023 UPK season. And the first date for the 2023-2024 UPK lottery goes to...
And the first name for the 2023-2024 UPK lottery goes to...
Second place, Ichen Gutierrez Astudillo.
What number is that?
That's two. Student number three. Student number four. Student number five.
Valentino Longio Cruz.
Number seven.
Lia Ortiz Morales.
Six. Jumping the gun with seven here.
Six.
Student number seven.
Bo Couture. Kayla Paredes.
Student number nine.
Ryan Suter.
And last but not least, to round out the first 10 students of the lottery.
Daniel Munoz Arias.
The number twelve.
Gabriel Feliciano Ochoa.
Student number thirteen. Student number fourteen. Student number fifteen.
Olivia Wabner.
Student number seventeen.
Benjamin Burton.
Student number eighteen.
Angel Rodriguez Peña.
Number nineteen. All right, student number twenty-one. Number twenty-two.
Milli Mackey. Natalie Hudson. Navison Moscoso.
Student number twenty-eight. All right, last round. Student number thirty-one.
Erol Albarasin.
Student number thirty-two.
Oris Green. Harper Charles Walter.
Student number thirty-six.
Emma Stons.
And the last pick for the 2023-2024 UPK lottery goes to Melissa.
Melissa Guillén Santos.
Is there any significance to the magic ball in here? Did we all get a rise or just...
Thank you, everybody. We look forward to being in touch with our new students and explaining our programs to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to public comment. Persons may address the board of education on any matters of interest or concern. The board president will recognize all speakers. Time limits may be imposed based upon the agenda needs. I think we're all set. All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
A motion.
I need a second. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Get home safely.